So, welcome everyone to the Planning Commission, Richmond Planning Commission meeting of April 5th, 2023. We have no studio audience today, but it looks like we might have some visitors at the Zoom. And we have an adequate number of Planning Commission members, so welcome everyone. And our first order of business is to welcome our new Director of Planning and Zoning. Keith O'Bourn is here on my left.
That is me, yes.
And I will let him introduce himself. He started on the 27th, so he's getting a very rapid learning curve, getting up to speed, doing well.
Yes, and I would, and I would first of all say hello. And I'm kind of a known entity. I was your previous zoning administrator two years ago. I've come in now as your Director of Planning and Zoning, and part of my portfolio is a myriad of committees, which I'm beginning to come up to speed on at this point, and I would beg for your patience on this whole issue here. And really, my approach for you folks is to, is to help facilitate public engagement, do the research that you need, and make presentations. And that's really what, what I'm here for. I do have an opinion, but it's more going to be along the lines of a technical opinion than anything else. So, you know, you, you guys are the ones that are driving the bus, and I guess the metaphor would be I'm putting the fuel in it, I guess. I mean, I don't know, I guess that would work. But I'm highly approachable, you know how to get ahold of me, and I'm quite responsive when I have enough, enough time on my hands, put it to you that way. So, there you go.
Great. So, thank you. And maybe everyone who's here at this Zoom meeting could briefly introduce themselves. So Keith is gonna wanna get to know the commissioners and our regular guests. So Lisa, do you wanna start?
Sure. Hi Keith, I talked to you last night, so. You see you almost every night, it looks like. Anyway, welcome aboard, glad to have you. And did you learn things that you, while you're out, you know, away from Richmond that you didn't know last time you were here?
Is there, is there, yes.
Okay, so you're coming back with more of a loaded, whatever you call it, like ammunition. Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, there's been some changes. Obviously, I'm coming from Charlotte, which is a totally different animal than Richmond, so. Totally.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think we wanna be Richmond.
Lisa's gone over to the other side, she's gone over to the Select Board.
I saw that, yeah.
And you can be a member of both boards, but I don't know.
It's, it's not totally my idea, I was drafted, so I said, okay.
Chris?
Yeah, well, hi everyone, I'm, I'm back after being out for the last two meetings for knee surgery. And I'm still in the recovery period, but I will see how far I get tonight. I, I, I have to say I'm doubtful I'm gonna last through the whole meeting just because I'm on, still on pretty heavy pain meds. But Keith, welcome, great to see you, and I look forward to working with you. I've been on the, the Planning Commission, what, for about four years now, I think, and I'm a former Select Board member myself.
Excellent.
And Chris, could I remind you that your reapplication is due by the 11th of April?
Oh, is it? Okay.
If you plan to reapply, which would be great, you should go to the website and look under Boards and Committees, and Application, and just fill that form out, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, Mark?
Hello, nice to meet you again Keith, and we spoke last night as well. Welcome aboard, I'm looking forward to working with you.
Back at you, Mark.
Great. Uh, let's see, Dan, oh, Dan's cooking, but.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm now in eating mode, so I can switch over. Hello, I'm Dan, I'm, I think I still am the newest member two years in, so still a little bit of learning, but nice to meet you and look forward to working with you.
Back at you.
Dan is an attorney, so.
Oh, watch out, okay.
Not, not that kind of attorney.
Good answer.
All right, um, let's see, Joy?
Hey Keith, nice to see you again. We've crossed paths several times, sorry it's dark, I don't know why my speech is like that, but we've crossed paths both in us applying for applications for building, I believe, right?
Yep.
And also on the Planning Commission before, and it's nice to have you back.
Yep, nice to be here, good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Great. Allison, this is Allison.
I'm here. Yeah, I've lived in Richmond since 1968.
Hmm, I was six.
You were six, well, rub it right in.
Allison has her institutional memory.
I'm, yes, I guess so. I'm actually an eighth generation native Vermonter, and very proud of that. So Richmond's very dear to my heart, and I live on, I'm now on the Bates Farm and across from Birds Eye Building, and have an aquatic pool up there, and that's where I am.
Yeah, we had, we had spoken many times, not many times, but a few times, under the auspices of the DRB, because you were an alternate net member, and it helped you with a couple of applications too, and yeah, no, it's good to see you.
I've bothered just about everybody.
You've bothered. I don't know about that. Great.
Great, thank you. And Gary, do you wanna say hello? He's kind of one who's interested in these things.
Well, Joyce.
What about your wife?
You're here too.
Yeah, I said hi.
Oh, did you? Joyce said hi, yeah, so we have Aaron, Aaron could say hi, and Gary could say hi.
Like I said.
Oh boy.
Your pain meds are kicking in.
Hey Gary, how you doing?
Good, yeah, so Keith and I have already talked, I was in talking to Tyler about something, and we reconnected, so it's nice to have you back, Keith.
Yep, it's good to be here, absolutely.
Great, thank you, and your continued interest always, thank you Gary. Um, and Aaron, you've met Aaron, you met Aaron at MMCTV, there's Aaron, hello.
Yeah, I'm here recording the meetings mostly, but I do live in Richmond, so every once in a while I pipe in with a little something. But mostly, I'm kinda quiet here, so, welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Great, okay, so. Good welcome, you met everybody, and we will move on to look at the agenda and see if there are any adjustments to this agenda. Basically, it's our same agenda that we have had. The continuation of the Village Neighborhood Districts and continuation of short-term rentals, some other updates that we'll follow that up with. Joy?
I am curious, Lisa, are you here as a member of the Planning Commission or the Select Board, or just as a member of the community?
Um, all three, I guess, I mean, not to avoid the question, but there's nothing that I've found that prohibits me from serving on, remaining on the Planning Commission, while being on the Select Board. Now, with that said, I have to be careful what I say. I mean, if we've learned something in executive session, or something that pertains to Planning Commission business, I have to keep my mouth shut, even if I really don't want to, but generally, I don't think there's gonna be too much of a conflict, because the, the Planning Commission is not the legislative body, it's a deliberative body and advisory body. So I don't think there's much danger of slip of the tongue or anything.
Okay, Virginia, you mentioned that sort of in passing, but I didn't catch on the fact that that really is what's going on here. All right.
Yeah, yeah, um, I guess I can, I could retreat to the other hat if I needed to, I have that advantage, but I don't see how that would help. But yeah, I mean, I've, I want, one of the things I ran on was making sure that our land use laws get put into effect. And, you know, I can only do, you can only do so much of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission created a great package to hand off to the Select Board. So from that point, it's, it's not a planning issue anymore, it's a, it's an enactment issue, it's how to, how to get it to 100%, how to get it over the finish line. But I, I felt like I really wanted to follow what we're doing, because I believe in it, and I think the whole Planning Commission believes in it, so. Worth doing.
Got it, thank you.
And so, the Planning Commission has four seats up for reappointment this year, so we may need all the people that we have.
Every time.
We may need to cut back to our seven-member commission if we don't get reapplications, and you know, we need, that way, we only need four people for a quorum and not five people, so anyway. I am glad that you're here, Lisa.
Oh, thank you.
So you can deal with all the work on both boards.
Uh, I guess you'll be the judge of that.
Um, any changes to the agenda that people would like to make? Any comments about the agenda? Any comments about things that are not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, seeing no hands, we'll move on to item number five, which is looking at the minutes of our March 15th meeting. Anybody have any corrections, comments? Changes they would like to make to those minutes? Chris, I'm sure you read them thoroughly post-op, right? Yeah, okay, all right.
I said, oh, you bet.
Not seeing any hands or hearing any comments, we will accept those minutes into the record as written. And we'll move on to item number six on our agenda, which is a continuation of the discussion of the Village Neighborhoods. And what I'd like to start with is just looking at the map, so that I can show you the changes based on our last discussion on 315 of this map. And Melanie at CCRPC made this revised map for us, that we're now going to
Attempt.
Attempt. The screen share and look at.
There we go, folks.
Yeah, it's a complicated system that we've got going here with the two computers, so.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm having technical difficulties here, for sure. Um, what, what you can do in lieu of me doing this would be to go to the town of Richmond webpage and pull this up, and then in the meantime, I can.
Except they'll have to get off their Zooms.
That's true.
Right, they can't get off their Zooms. So if we, we don't have to look at this map at, at this moment, I can tell you what the changes were. If you pull the map up in your mind. We talked about two properties that have Millet Street addresses that are right next to the Goodwin Baker Building. We talked about those, whether or not we wanted to leave them in the residential district or move them to the RC District. So based on our last conversation, I did put them back in to the residential district. I did talk to the owner of one of them, Andrew Powers, who was interested in having his lot, which has a building which actually faces on Tilden, but it has a Millet Street entrance as well. He is interested in being in the, in being placed in the RC District. But, you know, we already have that package of amendments in front of the Select Board, so it's not gonna happen right now, and he wasn't planning to do anything right now with his lot. So those lots are in this district that we're now talking about, the Village Residential Districts North. So that was those two lots. We looked at the Village Residential South. And if you remember, we extended it all the way along Carcon Road as far as the water and sewer lines, as far as the water and sewer district extended. At the very end of where the water and sewer is extended is the cemetery that belongs to, one of the cemeteries that belongs to the Catholic Church. Right next to that is a, an access road to a big castle that's owned by Rick and Chi Chi Barrett. I did talk to them and showed them the map and asked them if they wished to be in this neighborhood district or stay in the AgRes district. They wish to stay in the AgRes district. And so I had the map redone to show both the cemetery, which doesn't need to be in this residential district, it can be in either district, it makes no difference. Both the cemetery and the access road to the Barrett property, I left them out of the new district, kept them in to the AgRes, which is where they are now, that, that is how the Barretts wish to have it. Across the street from them is conservancy land, that's out of the district, that has no, there's no reason for that to be in this residential district. So that's what this current map reflects. Uh, so those are the two main changes that I had Melanie make in the maps, and at some point we'll be able to look at that.
I have no internet, that's what's going on.
Oh.
It's not recognizing it.
Not recognizing it, okay. So the other new thing that we have, that we will be able to look at at some point is, do you think my computer would recognize the internet?
Maybe.
Got that feedback.
What's going on here?
I've got the map open on my computer, if I shared my screen, y'all would be able to see it.
Yeah, that'd be great, do it.
Let's see if we can do that. Uh, so I think you, Keith, you need to let me, oh no, I see, okay, let's see, so if I do this. Okay, here we go.
So multiple participants should be able to share.
Oops. That.
Yeah, we got the map under, if you can get rid of your box here, great. Wow, all right, can you enlarge it a little bit, Chris, just the left-hand portion?
How do I enlarge this?
You've got a plus up there at the top, yep, see the little plus in a circle, I think that's a plus, isn't it?
Where are you seeing that?
In your bar at the top, yeah, that bar at the top.
You mean these ones?
Yeah.
No, those are pages.
Oh, okay.
Let's see.
Magnifying glass?
Oh, maybe the magnifying glass, yeah.
Here we go. How's that?
Okay, that's great. So we can look at the north neighborhood here.
Like around here?
And if you, can you see the Goodwin Baker lot, can you see that? It's that little brown part that extends out into the yellow part. In the middle, right in the middle of your map. So the dark brown area is the new RC District. This is what we've got in front of the Select Board right now, that they're having their hearing on the 18th about. Those are the parcels that we added to the RC District, which is the brown striped area off to the right on East Main Street. That's the original RC District. We have added this brown, all those brown lots along the Jericho Road, the Holy Rosary Church property and the Doctor's Office property, and the Goodwin Baker Building on Millet Street. Um, we have added those to the RC District. So the two lots that we were contemplating, thinking about, maybe they should be in the RC District, were the two lots just above the Goodwin Baker Brown bump there. You can see that, I don't know if you can point to it, Chris, but.
Let's see, maybe I can draw a little bit, would that be like right here?
Exactly, perfect, those two lots. The one right next to the Goodwin Baker Building has only an access onto Millet Street. It's owned by some folks who live in Jeffersonville, it's a duplex, it's rented. The L-shaped lot next to that, that has a Tilden Ave frontage and a Millet Street frontage, is a duplex, it's owned by Andrew Powers, who lives on Snipe Island Road. He is interested in having more multifamily options, although he recently built that duplex, so he says he's really not gonna do anything right now. So we're just, I had questioned what, which district they're in, they're just staying in this yellow neighborhoods district. So if you scroll down a little bit, Chris, if you can, yep. Great, that's great. So you can see the dotted, the dashed line that runs along the bottom of your screen there. That is the boundary of the water and sewer district, and it does.
Yeah.
It does go around the cemetery, which is the white box there at the right-hand end of the water and sewer district as we look at it. And then there's a little access road next to it that leads to a big property. Yeah, that's the cemetery, across the street from that is nature conservancy land, and the other white part next to the river is nature conservancy land, so there's no point in putting that in this residential district. So I took those out.
I'm bad news.
Don't do anything, just get the map back. So anyway, so you got a brief glimpse, anyway, of the pieces that we were talking about. Those are the new things on the map, I don't know if anyone has any comments about those while we're waiting, or, yeah, Gary?
Uh, on the north side?
On the Village Neighborhoods North?
Yeah, if you could scroll back up a little bit. So I just, just suggest that, like, from Route 2, the Boorman, I guess it's a four-plex, and then the Catholic Cemetery, and then there's other properties, I would suggest just following property lines rather than making a bunch of those lots be in two zones.
Yes, they should follow the property lines, I don't know why they don't follow the property lines, but, and that was supposed to be fixed, but I'll make a note that we need to fix that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's at the edge between the gateway and the Village Residential North. The other thing that we fixed was, can you make that a little bigger again? Chris?
Uh, okay.
Chris, if you, if you have a mouse and you just press Control and then like scroll up with the mouse, it should.
How's that?
Great, yep. Okay, so any, does anyone have any other comments about this part? The other thing was that on that original map that Melanie made, one of the school lots was in the Residential Neighborhoods District, and the other one was in the high-density residential, so we put them both in this district. It, to me, it doesn't matter which district you put those in, and I don't know if anybody feels that it does matter. They're just off your screen at the top, but both of those school lots are now in this new district, the Residential Neighborhoods North. So, yep, there you go, those two lots that are at the very edge of the map here.
These ones?
Yep, right. The other thing that you could look at on this map is, while we're looking at it, is the four-acre parcel, that's the Ball Field, that we have talked about in terms of possible affordable housing. It's a town-owned lot, Chris, if you go to, um, let's see, it's like one, two, three, four lots, big lots down from the top. It looks a little bit like a Pac-Man, it has an open mouth at the left-hand side, that lot right there, yep. So that's the lot that's known as the Ball Field. And it's four acres, it's surrounded by ravines, it's a little grassy area with this girl's softball field infrastructure on it, and that has been thought about as possibly a house, housing site, like affordable housing site. Anyway, just, that's by the by, it's in this district.
Does that have road access?
Yes, it does, right at the lower right-hand corner, it is on Brown's Court. Yep, exactly, right there. There's a little parking area. Um, it's a cool place to go and see, if you've never been up there, there are these really steep ravines all around it. You can, the edge of that property is totally steep, and it goes down to ravines that are owned by the property at the end of Burnett Court. It's a 12-acre parcel consisting entirely of ravines, it's really cool, so I recommend a visit if you haven't been there. Uh, so anyway, that's these lots, and another thing we.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Virginia, I had my hand up, but.
Oh, sorry, Mark.
It's okay, it's okay, I know, right, mixed meaning there. Um, I just wanted to add, though, that the Rec Committee has, you know, definitely recognizes that Brown's Court property as something that could be, played more, more prominent role in, in Richmond Recreation. So we've been talking about things that we could do there that would be perhaps low-impact, but also improve recreating capabilities. So I, I'm hesitant to start talking about uh, putting quadruplexes up there.
Yep, well, so what has happened on the Housing Committee is that they're talking about this as an affordable housing site, so this clearly is gonna have to be a discussion. You know what I mean? Because we have competing goals here, we don't have that much open space for recreation in Richmond Village, you know, it's a great place to have, maybe increase the use for recreational. We don't have affordable housing either, maybe it's a place for senior-supported housing or affordable housing. So definitely the Rec Committee and the Housing Committee are gonna have to get together and have a discussion, and the whole community, about the, these competing values that we're putting on this little piece of land. So, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up about the Rec Committee and opening the door for that dialogue that's gonna have to happen. Um, the affordable housing people, the NGOs, are very interested in that parcel, just because it has connection to the village, it has, you know, water and sewer, it's owned by the town.
A lot of perks to, to developing that, I get it, but.
Yeah, yeah, I totally see your.
It'd be nice, we talked about tennis courts and, and pickleball and, and bocce courts and those kinds of things that wouldn't be huge volumes of traffic.
Yeah.
But let's provide a resource, since we can't build anything in the, anything. Anything at all so much as putting in a picnic table in the. Gate, in the uh volunteer screen as as things are are interpreted now. So that's why I also wanted to bring up, you know, volunteer screen zoning at some point as a, as a talking point. Maybe there can be some sort of. Practical trade-off for that if we can further optimize volunteer screen space.
Yep. Well, the affordable housing people thought that, or the supported senior housing people thought having pickleball there would be a great. Uh combo. It's a popular sport amongst the geriatric set at the moment. So anyway.
Not just the geriatrics.
Yeah, pickleball is hot right now. So, um, yes, that is a discussion that will definitely have to be out there in the public domain at some point. The other thing that we could think about while we're thinking about this area is. The size of these lots. Now. So I went through and looked at the size of all these lots from the parcel viewer. And did the math to figure out at one unit. For every five thousand square feet of land, how many units you could get on each one of these lots? So we have a table that we may or may not be able to share with you at this time.
Yeah, it 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 should be the same, same thing um as as pulling up that map. It's it's under the village unit count.
Okay, so Chris, if you could pull up village unit count.
Yep, that's it.
So.
It's pretty rudimentary, but.
The, the information that we get from this, you will have to recall. Is, so. We show the number of units that you could put on this.
Sorry.
Based solely on the size of the property. So you have to keep in mind that there are other factors that limit the number of units. One is the developable land available. So some of these lots are very small. They're already a quarter of an acre, only a quarter of an acre. And half of them is taken up with a cliff, for instance. So the developable land is going to be a limiting factor. The lot coverage, even if we go to fifty percent from forty percent, is going to be a factor. And. Other factors, whether they already have several units on them. Many of these lots in the Baker-Tilden area are already duplexes. So if you're thinking, okay, you could put some more lots on, they, some more units on. The units may already be there on the lots. Anyway, you can see the lots are pretty small. So one unit is five thousand square feet. You have to have five thousand square feet. There are some lots that aren't even. You know, they're not even a quarter of an acre, which is ten thousand square feet. Two units, you need the ten thousand square feet. You can see. This is the whole neighborhood north. So we did Pleasant Street, West Main Street, as well as Baker-Tilden and Brown's Court. There are quite a few lots that could have two units. Some of them already have two units. Some of them won't. Be able to tolerate two units. Some that could have three units and then you start getting. You know, the numbers get a little bit lower as you go on. Um, not very many could uh would have the capacity for. Six or seven units, any kind of large number of units. Anyway, so this was just a start to try to understand what a build-out would look like. And if we continue to only allow single-family or duplexes. Of course, you're just not going to have the room on these lots to have additional units. If it turns out by state statute that we have to allow three and four-unit buildings on these lots. Then it's going to be, obviously, it will be easier to put these extra units because you can go up. You can go up to a second floor, for instance, if it's a single, a single level. So, anyway. This is something that you can, you know, just look at, we can think about. Allison and I took a little drive around the area today and noticed where the duplexes were. Many duplexes. Especially on Baker Street um and Tilden Ave. The houses on Brown's Court are pretty much all one-story. So, you know, there's potential there for a second story. But it's definitely going to be a lot-by-lot examination of these properties because they're very. Particular. They have, you know, their own, many sort of individual factors. Gary, you had something you wanted to say? Yeah.
I just, just a question. So, uh, the five thousand thing, how does the ADU fit in with that? Um, are you requiring another five thousand for an ADU or not?
Well, this is a question that I think we're going to have to work with the lawyers on. Because the way the state has set it up right now, before we have any changes. If you have a single-family home, you have to allow an ADU. The only way that you can make that conditional. Is if it doesn't, and they list setbacks, lot. Coverage or other dimensional requirements. They don't mention density or non-developable portions. So what if you have, for instance, a lot that. The density would be exceeded if you put an ADU. Do you still have to allow that ADU or not? That's an answer for the lawyer is going to have to give us. He's going to have to tell us if that state law that requires you to allow an ADU. Without the density, do you, are you still required to? It, to me, it looks like in the state statute, they should. Allow you to not have an A, to to make it conditional and deny it. If you don't, for instance, have enough developable land to put an ADU, you should be able to deny it. That is actually not mentioned in the statute.
Yeah, so. Sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Gary.
I was, I was just gonna say, is parking involved in that as something you have to show or not?
Well, the currently, the way the regs are written right now, you would have to show the, show that absolutely. S one hundred is probably going to kick that down to one. Per unit. So um when, when and if that passes, and I would say that's more of a when that passes. Um, you know, but right now, as far as the ADUs go, it has to be owner-occupied. One of those units has to be owner-occupied. You cannot preclude the approval of an ADU. Um, based on the fact that it's an ADU, you have to approve it based on the fact that it's a single-family dwelling. It's under those, it's under the same umbrella as a single-family dwelling right now. You just got to be able to, to handle the, the density issues. You got to be able to waste water and the water for that unit.
Thank you.
Lisa has her hand up, by the way.
There, yeah, there are things that are kind of unclear a little bit about this, Lisa.
Uh, thanks. Um, you know, Virginia, I think before anybody goes too far. Uh, regarding that land at the end of Brown's Court, um, since there is such erosion around the perimeter, I guess. Uh, I wonder how stable the soils are up there. I mean, nothing's built on them, so they don't have any, any uh thing to bear, but. How good of a building site is that? And maybe what is the, the real perimeter? Within which buildings could be erected? Probably near the edge of that is not buildable, so. Uh, just a thought, if we make too many plans, might have to undo some of them.
Yeah, we certainly wouldn't make any plans before we found out that kind of thing, you know? I mean, it would be engineering and some kind of engineering would have to be if it it even went anywhere, that idea.
If somebody does a quick estimate or just, you know, experienced eye can tell a lot. Maybe if somebody knowledgeable. Just walks the perimeter out there and gets an idea of uh how much is usable.
Yeah, well, this, there are trees all along the edge of it, but. Yeah, somebody would have to look at it. So, yeah, any questions about this? It's just a start to try to see if we could figure out some kind of. You know, way to think about this, way to think about how many more units there are. When I saw how many were already duplexes. It seemed like a lot of these places that would allow two units. Already had duplexes. So if they only two units were allowed, they're already filled.
Built out.
Yeah, so it's built out. And how that works, if one of those duplexes, I mean, if they then, isn't there a possibility that duplexes are going to be allowed to have an ADU?
Um, I'll have to look at the, the statute that they're going through right now.
Think I saw that there was a possibility that duplexes were going to be allowed. And if that would make our density question even more. Um, difficult to understand if it's a just big enough for a duplex. And each one of those duplexes wants to have an ADU, are you required to allow them? Even though they don't meet the density requirement.
So, so Virginia, I think it is baked into the law that you have to. Uh, have, you can subject a single-family home with an ADU to the same dimensional requirements as a single-family home. Without an ADU. And so I, my, my, my read of that is that you can. You know, take that added density into account. Um, and so I, I think, I don't know, again, yeah, I, I would want the, the attorney's review on this, but I would. I would operate personally, I would operate under the assumption that, that you do take that into account. For density, it's just that you can't treat those units, those lots differently, right? You're treating this, you, you do the same analysis.
Yep. Yeah, one of, one of the, one of the limiting factors of the ADU is, in the language is, is thirty percent. Of the size of the principal structure or up to nine hundred square feet. So, um, you know, that's a limiting factor. I'm pretty sure with the way that S one hundred's going, that's going to be eliminated. At this point, but I, I don't know, uh, that, that, that needs to go through the process. I mean, the Senate voted on it and they passed it. Twenty-seven to two, and now it's, now it's to the House, is my understanding. Yeah, I did, so, so what? Yeah, that's a state, so that's the minimum, that's the bar. And um what you can do, individual and individual municipalities, you can increase that, that square footage. Um, you could say, uh, it's thirty percent or up to fifteen hundred square feet, which they have in Charlotte. And it's what, whatever is bigger, not necessarily smaller. So to give you that, that's an out also. So it can get confusing. And on top of all that, it needs to be owner-occupied.
Right. However, the, you mean the house needs to be.
Excuse me, Allison, could you pull the microphone closer to you? The one on the, the flat one on the table? Just pull it a lot closer to you. Thank you.
I, I was asking about the um, uh, the size of the ADU.
Right, so up to nine hundred square feet or thirty percent of what the existing principal structure is. Which could be larger than nine hundred square feet, obviously, at thirty percent.
And the owner of the property can live in either the ADU or the single-family home. However, this also becomes more complicated if we add into this district. An amendment that we've added into the RC Districts, which is you can have two principal structures. On a lot. And this was to overcome some of the limitations. Of the ADU requirement in state statute. So. In our RC Districts, we have said. You can have two principal structures. They can be the same size. They can be owned by the same people or different people. They are like a duplex, the two halves of which are separate buildings. And are owned by different people. So we have that suggested. In our amendments that are in front of the Select Board at the moment. So. One question that we might want to figure out an answer to is, do we want that in this district? Is there a reason to have that in this district? So that overcomes any kind of limitations in terms of size. It doesn't solve the density problem, you know? I mean, it kind of makes the density problem worse. Because then if you have two single-family structures, do each of them, are each of them required to allow an ADU? So.
What about the, the yard, the space that these two buildings occupy? Who gets to figure out? Um, who can use what parts of it? And I mean, I would think that this could be a little problematic at times.
Yep. Well, condos face this all the time. condo buildings and condo duplexes, so. What we have required, if you remember in our, what we submitted to the Select Board in the RC Districts. Is um. That the legal arrangements about the land are written down.
Oh, okay.
When you make the application. So, does everybody own it in common? Do, does each person get a footprint? How does that actually work? Has to be, you know, it has, the legal arrangements have to be made. Um, ahead of time.
Okay.
So anyway, so that is something that we have to think about, you know, any of these things that we have. Put into our RC District. Do we want them in this district? Maybe we do, maybe we don't. So, uh, I think we're done with this unless, let's see. What are your notes saying?
Talking about stormwater.
Oh, yes, stormwater. Yeah, this is another thing that we haven't really considered, particularly stormwater. So. Keith is going to talk to us a little bit about stormwater.
You could see the notes that I put on there and that's really kind of just rough notes on that. You have to, you have to take care of your stormwater. I mean, you're not going to want to have the people in the neighborhood or the roads, uh, you, you have to, to, to be flooding during storm events. So it's just a consideration that needs to happen and I need to have a discussion with Pete. Um, and I need to also look at the, the Stormwater Master Plan that was completed in twenty eighteen, but I think that that was for existing issues. More than anything when I looked at it. Um, so, uh, you know, once you start developing these parcels and, and there's no. Permeability left, the water has to go somewhere. Um, and it has to be accounted for at some point or another. And, and I know that, I know Gary, you're very much well aware of that. Um, you know, that, that there are stormwater issues uh in the town. I, I know it when I drive through during storm events. Um, but I don't think there's anything horrible at this point. Uh, but it is a consideration, so uh that, that's where the thinking is on that.
Well, we should also be considering changes in precipitation patterns. Um, you know, that we've already observed in Vermont due to climate change and those trends continuing into the future as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the modeling, the modeling numbers need to be changed and updated based on climate change for sure. I mean, the hundred-year storms are now, you know, twenty-five-year storms, so.
Or worse.
Or worse, exactly.
Yep. So, you know, what the lot coverage, I think. Stormwater, I guess, probably was originally controlled by having open land.
Yes.
To absorb the water. So this district has traditionally been forty percent. The question is, should we leave it at forty percent? Should we make it fifty percent? Does, how does that affect the stormwater situation? You know, and maybe that's a discussion that. Has to happen with engineers. I don't know.
I would think.
Yeah, you know, if, if we add that small amount of possible lot coverage to allow for a little more building. Is that going to be problematic for stormwater? So that's kind of on the list of things that we have to.
Virginia?
I don't hear Virginia.
Can you hear us?
Now I can.
You're off, shut that down.
That's the, this town computer, right?
The plug wasn't in.
We must have been the star, stormwater. We got too much stormwater out there.
Do you need a life preserver down there?
The, um, the plug came out of the, uh, laptop, and I think he's getting us back, uh, back connected.
Okay. I think I am going to have to drop off in a few minutes. Is there someone else who can, who can, uh, uh, access this town website and show the images if I do that?
Oh. Hi, Chris. We can hear you, Chris, but we can't see you on our screen, but do we need to see you on?
But we, same here, we can, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Okay. Well, the town computer went totally dead for a while, and now it's back, but we are.
Oh, the screen is trying to come back.
The screen is coming back a little bit. Okay. I think we've got, we've got it now.
Like, can you see us at all?
We still can't see you.
No, we can't see you.
Okay. There's a few little technical glitches.
We are still seeing your screen sharing, though, and since, are you just still talking about that? Maybe you?
But the screen sharing is coming from Chris Scrande.
Oh, right, okay.
All right. Right, and I need to stop doing that in a few minutes to go take a bunch of medicine, so. Yeah, Chris, I can cover you. Can you? Thanks, Mark. I'm going to stop sharing here.
All right, buddy, feel better.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Bye, Chris.
Coming.
Bye, Chris.
So we're, we are not, we are not live yet.
Okay, this is from Mark computer.
Nope, I am not sharing yet. I've never done this before, so.
All right, well, this is, so, okay, well, maybe we want to not share the screen anymore. We can just talk a little bit.
Yeah.
Everybody has seen the map a little bit, the map, you can look at the map on your own.
There, there it is, we see Mark's screen.
The problem is, is I'm not in. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pop out, I'll be, I'll be back in a second.
Okay.
We're just going to reset this whole flipping thing.
Okay.
Bye-bye. What is that called when you're, um, technologically challenged?
Normal.
Over twelve years old.
You learn from your mistakes, it's older history. And boy, have I learned.
We're missing, we're missing Mark. There's Mark, yay. Who are we missing? Lisa, there's Lisa. All right, and Chris had to go take his meds, so. I think everybody's.
Virginia, could I ask a question?
Yeah, go for it.
Before you go on to another topic, I was wondering, is there some way you can set it up that, uh, people could either have could have two principal structures or principal structure and ADU or whatever, as long as they have five thousand per in this district, five thousand square feet per unit, can you somehow make that the controlling? Because if you have, if you have more than that, you could make, can't you make multiple uh, five thousand square foot principal structures?
So what we have in our RC district proposals that are in front of the select board is two principal residential structures on a lot. That's as far as we went. We entertained the possibility of A, having any number of principal structures on a lot or having principal structures that weren't residential on the lot. And we ended up with the compromise or the small step from one principal structure on a lot to two principal structures on a lot. So that's what we have in front of the RC district. That's really where we landed with that. We obviously, in another district, we could do something else. What we would like to say is that for every five thousand square feet, you can have a dwelling unit, so it's, you could have an ADU and a principal structure, you could have two principal structures, you could have one duplex, you could, you know, if you had the minimum amount of land, you can have any of those combinations, but not all of those combinations. If you only have a small amount of land, you know, you have to decide which of those combinations, if you have the minimum amount with five thousand feet per dwelling unit.
Uh, yeah, I think that's what I was trying to suggest is that the five thousand is the, the limitation, as long as you have five thousand, say you have fifteen thousand, then you could pick what you want, three principles.
Two structures and one ADU.
Yeah.
Right. Well, as long as that's legal, that's fine, and as long as that doesn't contradict the statute that requires that you not prohibit ADUs wherever there are single-family homes. If you see what I mean, because that leads you to this conflict, perhaps, between density and whether or not you can have an ADU. We would like to have it, you know, limited by the five thousand square feet per dwelling unit. As long as it's legal, we have to consult. Uh, somebody else had something? All right. Can we look briefly just at the, um, the residential neighborhoods north? I don't know if we're going to be able to share this or not, but.
I'm going to attempt to.
Anyway, so looking, looking at the text of section three point eleven Village Residential Neighborhoods North. We didn't, we didn't really talk about.
That's me. Good, you're good.
We didn't really talk about whether, um, the uses were what we wanted. I don't know if we want to talk about that, you know, in our discussions with these neighbors, they only want residential uses. Are we all still good with that? And they only wanted to go as far as duplexes. No three and four unit buildings. So.
Where's this in the AR district?
No, in the residential neighborhoods north district.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So unless we're required by law, by S one hundred, to have three and four family units wherever there's water and sewer, which is how they have it written. If they are, then we're going to have to probably revisit with the neighbors that fact. We're okay in our RC districts because we have allowed three and four unit. Uh, the, the amendments that are in front of the select board right now have allowed three and four units, so that's good, we're good there. Um. Does anyone have anything they want to talk about that? Should we just wait and see if S one hundred becomes law, which looks like the direction that it's going?
Hey, Virginia, my, my preference would be to wait and see what happens with S one hundred, just because that would, I think, pull a lot of tension off of us if we're required to do it by law, then we don't have to go through hearings and outreach, it's kind of, you know, a little more straightforward path and probably not, then we could avoid spending a bunch of effort that was unnecessary in the end.
And do you think that we're going to need to invite the neighbors to come if it passes and talk about the fact that this new law is requiring us to do this?
Yes. Would we have, have to? Probably not, but could we, should we? I think that's.
It's terrible for us to do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Hmm.
And we're okay with not having, uh, commercial uses? Oh, Lisa, you have your hand up.
Yeah, um, you can't see it unless I get behind it, because it's too pale in the background. Um, Virginia, I was wondering, you know, uh, maybe a little bit of a public information push at some point, uh, as these regulations are, are rolled out for comment or, or adoption. Um, I think a lot of people, the, the people who've been to meetings probably get it, and they know where to look also if they need more information, but a lot of people haven't done that, and I wonder if, uh, there's more we could do with local media and other things to just put out a, you know, the primer version of what these changes are and get people thinking in, in the right direction. Uh, before we, you know, take a lot of public comment before passing them, just, just a thought, and, or maybe the select board should do that, but um, somewhere in here, I think we need a public, uh, outreach.
Yeah. And maybe if S one hundred passes, we just need to invite people to think about S one hundred and what it is.
Right, maybe there'll be more clarity, uh, you know, than what we have right now.
Yeah. Dan?
Could we also potentially reach out to, you know, one of our representatives to come in? Uh, field questions so that we're not in a position of justifying things that someone else did?
That's a good idea.
I'm sure that Jana, Jana Brown, who is our rep, would be willing definitely to come and talk to us about it. Yeah, so, um, and it's maybe one of our senators would as well, I don't know, but she would definitely, and it, the bill is in the House right now, so. Yeah, good idea. Um, okay, anybody else want to talk about anything in the text of this? Of either of these districts? The two districts basically are quite similar, they both have residential uses. The difference being that the south neighborhood has the bigger lots, it has half acre, because we were going from one acre one house per one acre, one dwelling unit per one acre, which is the AR district, we're going from that making the lot slightly smaller as part of our gentle ill infill program, making them giving you a slightly more of an option to build on some of the lots. The lots are varying sizes down there in the southern neighborhoods district. Otherwise, they're fairly similar. We haven't put in any design standards in either of the neighborhoods district. That's something that we want to just make sure we do or don't want to do, you know, in the the RC districts, we had quite a lot of site and building development standards to make those, um, neighborhoods compatible business and residences. And for the gateway to make sure that it remained a scenic entranceway to Richmond in these residential neighborhoods, do we need any design standards? So, um, I'm hoping that you all will think about that. And also, do we need the multifamily housing standards? If we don't have multifamily housing, obviously, we don't really need the multifamily housing standards, but I guess we'll talk about that when we talk about S one hundred. And, uh, you know, if that comes to pass, then we're probably going to need the multifamily housing standards for three or more units. Yeah. So, all right. A couple of small things, lot frontage. We have seventy-five feet, we've now made the minimum lot size a quarter of an acre. Does it really make sense to have lot frontage required at seventy-five feet? Keith, you have an opinion about that?
I, I think it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, it's going to, depending on if there's any limitations on that lot. Uh, I'm you, you're not going to have a heck of a lot of room to, to do a lot of design on, on lots that small, to be honest with you. I know it's going to be railroad flats, you know, um. So, uh, you know, you might want a minimum, you might not want a minimum. I, I, I don't know, if you want to, obviously, the, the, the smaller the lot frontage, you know, the more density you're going to allow. Um, you're still going to need to take care of at least one parking space, I'm pretty sure that's in the statute. Um, so, uh, I think it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, to be honest with you. Um, fifty feet is not a lot. Now, and it's thirteen to fifteen steps. It's, it's just not a lot. Um, and no pun intended, though, as far as the size on that, um, but, you know, there, there is a certain lot width that you do want, you want a minimum lot width, I mean, it's, so this is just a myriad of dimensional issues that you're going to have to deal with, um, uh, every time you, you, you move one dimension, another dimension's going to follow.
That's right, if it's four to an acre, you've got to divide two hundred and eight feet by four.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, because that, that's like, if, if that's an acre square. But if it's skinnier or something, you know, it's, it depends on the shape of the lot.
I did look at the zoning in places like Essex Junction, which has a lot of quarter-acre lots and Heinsberg, and they both have areas where they have either fifty or sixty feet. For their minimum lot frontage, so, you know, other towns do recognize that problem. Gary, you had your hand up?
Uh, I I'm thinking you probably should drop it a little bit, and I was going to suggest fifty or sixty. Because, you know, five, the square root of five thousand is seventy, so if you have, require seventy-five, you can't even do a square lot if you have to have seventy-five.
Yeah. Yeah. So probably it makes sense to make that dimension a little bit less, Dan?
Along, along the same lines, I, my math is a little different, though. Isn't a quarter acre s- a square quarter acre, like fifty-two by fifty-two or something like that?
That's about right, an acre is two oh eight squared.
So, yeah, so I would, I would think we would want ma- maybe just use that as a metric of like allowing someone to have a square plot.
Right.
A quarter acre is, is, uh, ten thousand square feet, is, is a hundred by a hundred.
Yeah. Quarter of an acre is ten thousand square feet, or
A little bit more.
Eleven thousand, but we're calling it ten thousand, I mean, we're going with ten thousand. So that would be a hundred by a hundred.
Okay.
The five thousand is the amount you need for one dwelling unit. The ten thousand is the quarter of an acre.
Yeah, I, I never understood where they came up with forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty square feet, you know, it's, it's such a head scratcher.
I think it's, um, um, a change, it's from the metric system, what, what would have originally have been metric system, they turned it into the English system. And what that would be, but probably in the metric system probably works a lot better, it's like the difference between a yard and a meter.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, we have archaic terminology. Um, the other thing that's related to that is this old language that's in the zoning regulations about the circle with the radius of twenty-five feet or thirty-five feet in some cases in our zoning. And Mark, I think you asked a lot of questions about this when we were talking about it for the RC district. You had you had issues with this, I forget what they were, but basically we just said, well, it's in all our districts already. Why do we want to take it out? But maybe it doesn't make sense to have it in there. What does it do for us exactly? Having a circle with a radius of thirty-five, I mean, it helps make not, so that you don't make long thin lots, I guess, spaghetti lots.
But I mean, you could just, you could just represent that by a straight number, though. If, if it's twenty-five foot radius, we'll just make it a fifty foot width.
Yeah.
Minimum.
If you had a minimum lot width, of course, I mean, what if the lot shape changes and it's wider here and it's wider there? Does that mean, you know, what does a fifty-foot minimum width mean?
It all has to do with, with the subdivision itself, it wouldn't have to do with existing lots, so if you're doing a subdivision, you have to keep that into consideration, you have to take that into consideration. But you can't have a lot, any, any less in width than fifty feet.
Anywhere in its width.
Anywhere.
Any part of its width can't be less than fifty feet.
Well, does that have to do with what radius a car or vehicle would need to turn around?
Uh, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. Uh, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Cause you know, that's sometimes been an issue, but with the fire truck, can the fire truck turn around?
Well, on a quarter of an acre, they they are trucks not gonna be able to turn around very many places, right?
That, e- exactly, yeah, that, but they've got to be able to have access somehow.
At least that's my take on it.
All right, so I guess we'll have to look into that. What it would mean to change that. Radius question to either just frontage or with anywhere on the lot or. You know, I don't know, we'll have to.
It's just the minimum width is what they're getting at.
Yeah, maybe we can look at other zonings and see what they're. What they're um saying about it. Anybody wanna weigh in on that issue? Okay. So, um. How would you like to proceed with these two districts that we have some information about? We have some text written out for them. How do you wanna change, how, what kind of process do you wanna have going forward changing these districts?
I'd like to see what S one hundred comes through at before we. Tackle more, I mean, short of the the uses and whatever, which I think we're we're agreeing are residential. Then, then really the big deciding factor is size. Circular dimensions and and density, the ADU in relationship to uh multi-unit houses. So I, that's gonna be settled by state law. Might as well wait.
Mark, what do you think about the development standards question? Do you think we ought to have some development standards like we had in the other districts, or do you think we don't need development standards?
For 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 me, for residential, um, there's. There's less of an issue with, you know, private land, you know, I think uh. Houses are are have a lot of variety based on how old they are and what they look like, uh, I don't know if we should be really. Dictating color and code by, for residents, you know, you can see it in where we were with the gateway. Because people are so protective of it and wanted to have it and and the the historic uh commercial. Areas of the main streets, yeah, that that has application where you'd wanna have some some neighborhood character. Uh, cohesion, but residential is residential, in my opinion.
Okay, Joy, what do you think about that development standards question?
I stepped out of the room to get some water and I just caught the tail end of this. Um, I caught what Mark had to say, but I kinda, I think I agree with what he's saying, um. But then there's the other side of me that says, well, why wouldn't we do it everywhere? Um, but I I feel like I missed the important part of the conversation, so. I don't know that I'm a good person to ask right now.
Okay, just, you know, wondering if the, you know, those same kind of development standards that we had for the gateway, for instance. You know, I mean, the problem with having, for instance, a no parking in the front in some of these residential areas is there's a lot of parking already in the front.
But so when you say residential areas, do you mean the the two that we're talking about in the village?
Exactly, yeah. Do we want to have no parking in the front? This would be for new properties, obviously, the ones that are already here. There's parking in the front in quite a number of those properties. We could require parking on the side or in the back like we did, you know, that's another thing that. Um, is pretty common in other zoning ordinances, that parking is not really allowed in the front. Um, having a vegetated front yard is required in some ordinances. Uh, having your um dumpster screened. If it's in the front yard, you know, if it's visible, like if you take that house that was recently remodeled next to the Ski Express building, the brick. House that's between the Ski Express and the doctor's office. And have the dumpster right in the front yard, right out in the front yard. Would we like to discourage that by saying that you can't put your dumpster unscreened in your front yard? I don't know, these are just things that we should think about if we want or not in a residential district.
Okay, but would they be those specific standards, or are you saying we develop different ones?
We could develop any standards that we want. Yeah, so the question is, do we want any? If we want some, what do we want as standards? You know, would we, would we like to see any for any? Understanding that there's not going to be a lot of new development in these areas? So.
I'm gonna pass and wait to answer that question, I need to think about it.
Okay, great, so these are the things that we need to think about going forward, that's good for everybody to be thinking about them. Um, Mark and then Lisa.
Yeah, I would just add that, uh, you know, the standard to bring up an interesting point about a. Uh, dumpster in the front yard, but obviously that's not a private home, it's a. Multi-unit apartment building, no doubt, because I don't think anybody owned a home would want to put their dumpster in the front yard. So if you're gonna be, if we're gonna be pushed into uh multi-unit housing in neighborhoods. Through S one hundred, then I think we have to more seriously consider some reasonable standard. But I'm very hesitant with telling, you know. Whether or not your driveway can be in front of your house or has to be set off to the side, we're gonna be changing lot sizes to fifty feet. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a tough ask, so. I think we really need to start thinking about what S one hundred is gonna do to us. And then make our responses off of that, but uh, to to counter my original position. Yeah, maybe we do need to consider some some standards for mo- for residential.
Right, well, if three and four family buildings are gonna be allowed, then the multifamily standards are gonna kick in. And the multifamily housing standards do say that you have to have screening around your. Outdoor storage or dumpster or mechanicals or whatever. So if you have a duplex, it doesn't really fit in the multifamily housing, so theoretically you could put your dumpster in the front. Um, anyway, so that would be a good thing to think about, Lisa.
Oh, thanks, Virginia, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm thinking, okay, what if I were someone on the receiving end of these and what would I think? And, you know, I haven't been, so it's hard to, but I think that the standards that we've have out there, how however few they are for multifamily housing. Development standards or site standards. We should go with about what we've put out there before, cause people are used to that, it's been. You know, however much it's been uh considered, I don't know, but it's at least been out there for people to think about. So to start with something that we've already done would be the simplest way to get something in place. And if we have to revise it, we have to revise it, we'll probably learn some things we don't know right now, so revisions are almost almost a certainty, I think. So I'd I'd say go with what we know, what we've tried and adapt it to these sites uh as needed and be prepared for change.
All right. Anybody else, I mean, so those are the things that we want to be thinking about, how we want to do it, the standards, the frontage and the dimensions. Whether we want to residential structures on a lot to be allowed in these areas. Traffic generation, we're also gonna have to consider at some point. In our RC districts that are in front of the select board right now. We have used language to say a study has to be done with a certain number of trip ends generated. In these, in the high-density residential district currently in our zoning, it just prohibits. Anything with a certain number of trip ends. So if you look in our current zoning at the way those are written compared to the way our proposals. For the RC districts are written, you'll see that they're written differently, so we need to figure out. Okay, for a certain number of trip ends, do we want to require a study? Or do we just want to prohibit anything with more than that number of trip ends, and what is that number? It's pretty low in the high-density residential, it's like ten trip ends. Jolena Court was the first district that language was put in that says a study is required. This was back in the days of interim zoning, a study is required if it's over seventy trip ends. And we just moved that language from Jolena Court into the RC districts, it may not be suitable to be in. The residential districts. So if you could go over that and look at it and see what you think about that, we're gonna have to have a discussion about that. The other thing is that the DRB would like us to say, use the word may instead of shall. In talking about studies based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual, because they can't get a hold of that. Manual that costs eight hundred and fifty dollars a year or something to have it in Richmond, they don't wanna buy it. You can't use it at regional planning because their license prevents anybody else using it, so. The DRB would like it to say you, it may be consulted, not that it has to be consulted. Anyway, that's maybe a minor point, but. We need to think about what that's gonna say about traffic, what are we gonna say about the traffic in these areas, Gary?
Is it possible not to use the word trip end and just talk about number of units before you have to do a study? Since these are. Since the north and south is only talking about residences. Uh, instead of businesses, uh, it just seems confusing. When I read ten trip ends, I don't know what that means. We're talking about trip ends during the peak hour use, or I just don't understand it. And be nice to simplify, and my other suggestion would be maybe. Instead of waiting until uh. Uh, S one hundred is passed, you get the state rep in now to explain it, and if you have concerns about it. She could take those back and maybe modify the bill. In my mind, it's gone too far in some areas, taking too much away from local zoning input.
Yeah, which the League of Cities and Towns was on that page for a long time, you know, they're supporters of the municipalities. And didn't like a lot of these things, so. Um, yeah, well, that's a good idea, we can ask, I'll ask Jana if she would come and talk to us about it. Um, and as far as the traffic trip ends business, you know, I'm sure that language originally was just lifted from somewhere. And put into all these districts in our zoning, it's another thing that we. May wanna think, we wanna fix that, you know, who who knows what that meant? I mean, even when Jolena Court did the traffic study that was required by the interim zoning. It was unclear what the peak hours were considered, you know, many people thought that the study was flawed. That was done and, you know, I I mean. I have to say, I don't know a lot about it, so we'll put Keith on it. Looking on his list, things to look into, why do we have this language? How does it work? What does it mean? Do we need it, you know? Is this the best way to think about traffic in these neighborhoods with this kind of a? This kind of a study, I don't know. So. All right, so these should be on your all's list to think about, and maybe since it's now eight thirty. We'll just switch gears and give our minds a rest from the neighborhoods. And if you all have any thoughts about how you wanna proceed with thinking about these besides what we've already talked about, or. Questions about the map or anything, just let me know. So. All right, if we would like to move on for a short term, just to talk about short-term rentals. Um, do you wanna talk about whether an ordinance or zoning is better or what the pros and cons are?
Well, I I think I I would preface everything with what we discussed a little bit. Um, earlier this week is, is there really an issue with short-term rentals in the town? Um, having gone on to Airbnb and VRBO recently, I did that on Monday, I saw that there were just. Four properties on each one of them that were in the town of Richmond. Um, I'm not uh convinced that there's a problem, but if if the commission wishes to. Move forward to to alleviate a potential problem, I think that we, that would be more than than prudent. Um, I come from Lake George, uh, where where short-term rentals are an issue. Um, most recently, I I was at Paul Smith's and we saw a lot of issues in Lake Placid with that. So Lake, it's Lake Placid has has an ordinance, a standalone ordinance. That deals specifically with that, and they have a full-time person that actually takes care of that whole issue. Um, in Lake George where I was, that was part of the zoning. So it it really, what it comes down to is it's, you're adding to the plate of the zoning administrator for short-term rentals. You need to have 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 some type of performance standards with these short-term rentals. But I think the first step is to figure out, do we have a problem? Is that even the approach you wanna go for, or do we wanna head this off before it becomes a problem? So I I think that's kind of the way I would open that up. Um, and then for go from there, figuring out which way should we put it into the zoning regulations? Which means that you would, you would limit that through a a density or a time. Time type scenario or or short-term rentals gets put into the definitions. Um, or you put it into an ordinance where it's it's pretty strong. It's strong either way, um, the ordinance is standalone, whereas with the zoning and with the zoning, it would be in in the district tables. You know, we'd we'd have to figure that whole aspect out, um, so. I open it up to you guys to figure out how you wanna proceed with that and give me direction on that.
Are there easy to describe advantages to one or the other? I had understood somehow that. With an ordinance, you could maybe do more. You could have more different kinds of things that don't necessarily quite belong in a zoning.
Yeah, yeah, I I would agree with that, um, it's in the zoning ordinance, it could be, it could be, um, uh. Uh, precluded from certain districts, or it can be included in certain districts with an ordinance. That you could do the same thing, as I'm working through this, I'm spitballing out loud right now, folks, so. Um, i- it's, it's, uh, I I'd have to look a little bit more into it, what the, what the, uh. Uh, advantages are of each and what what the uh, this event. So. Uh, it's my experience comes from practical experience, and Lake Georgia was in the zoning ordinance and and we had an issue with it. And we would, we would get complaints and we would be able to follow through on complaints based on performance standards of each lots. Which is noise, uh, specifically it's noise. Um, and uh, in in Lake Placid, it 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 was more of an issue with property values. It was, it was a change going on in the neighborhoods, um, it was almost reverse gentrification. Um, to a certain extent. So.
And in those places, did they talk about the, what I have heard from commissioners is that. We would like to proactively try, since we have a housing problem, not to remove housing from the market. By allowing it to be turned into short-term rentals, especially on a commercial scale. Was there discussion in those towns about that or?
That I recall. That I recall, um because a lot of, they're, they're both tourist destinations. And you know, we're not really a tourist destination in, in the sense of Lake George or Lake, or Lake Placid by any stretch. Um and there was a lot of pushback on, on oversight of these, these types of uses. You know, it's, it's land rights issues that you're dealing with, it's ownership issues. Bottom line is the bottom line, uh you know, with people who have short term rentals. Uh and we were talking about this before, you, you look at Charlotte, which again is, I'm just based on my experience in Charlotte. There were dozens of short term rentals, and that's because the lake's right there. Um and it not so much here. I mean, there were a few in Huntington, and not too many, but a few. Actually, I think there's more in Huntington than there are in, in Richmond for some reason. I'm not sure why, maybe people just like the boones, the boones, camels hump, exactly, yeah. Probably has a lot to do with it. But I, I think I, I, you guys have to give me direction on how you wanna go and, and you know, give me the rudimentary uh baseline that you want.
And we have to understand that it will be more work for someone if we have this in our zoning. I mean, especially if we're gonna enforce it, if we think about enforcing it.
Or do you wanna register? Do you, you need to have a contact person? Do, I mean, there's a whole, whole few things you gotta deal with.
So, anyone has anything to add to this? Mark, I know you've been interested in getting ahead of the problem, basically, on a
Yes, I, you know, let, let's keep exploring it. I, I tend to suspect that there's more than six Airbnbs in Richmond, but um yeah, I think we need, we need to have that body of data. And even uh, even six Airbnbs, if their, their properties dedicated to short term rental are six places where uh you know, a couple or a family could, could live year round. If they're, if they're just for, for business. I think there's a lot of things wrong with uh the whole concept of Airbnb. And uh I definitely think that it has an impact on on residents, affordable housing. Maybe not as critical in Richmond, but then for that matter, well, if we can only control Richmond, let's at least control Richmond. Let's do our part.
So, so what I can do is uh dig a little deeper, um let, see, see if I can get a pretty hard number. Again, it's also uh not the time of year where people are really coming and renting houses out right now, short term. You know, the summer, the summer is where it's gonna go into spike, I would think.
Except for skiing here, but we might be over skiing, so for right now.
Yeah, so you know, they might delist it this time of year. I'm not sure. So uh, you know, uh but what, what we do need is we, we do need to quantify what's going on. I would agree with that.
So I think Revy had said that if somebody asked him about it, it would be permitted as a home occupation. Have you ever heard of it being done that way? But you know, whether we've given out any, you know, I don't imagine that people have asked us who are going to rent part of their homes out for a permit to do this as a home occupation. And maybe those are the people that you don't really need to regulate, the people who are doing it as a home occupation.
It's, it's pretty, it's silent in the zoning regulations. It really is. You know, you, you obviously you have your bed and breakfast, but you need to be, you need to be in that structure as the owner for bed and breakfast. You know, um and you need to be serving, you, 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 you're serving people in that use. It's, it's, it's a thorny issue. I mean, it certainly is. This is definitely a property rights issue. This is money you're talking about. Um but I'm sure this is all things that you, you folks know about. So what I'm hearing, uh Mark, is, is let, let me dig down a little bit deeper on the, on the quantification aspect of it. Um we can qualify all we want because we really can't, can't really see a whole heck of a lot of it. Um it is kinda silent.
Yeah, and so I put in the packet a possible strategy just from looking at some other ordinances, you know, like there are fourteen, I think there are fourteen towns in Vermont that regulate, that have regulations. Some are as simple as just having a registry, having people having to register if they're going to have a bed and breakfast. And there, you know, there are some advantages in knowing who's gonna do it. One is you know what your size of your problem is. So anyway, you could look at that sheet that I put in the packet that talks a little bit about people that we don't want to regulate too much, which is people who are living in their house, have a couple of rooms, maybe they don't need anything. They don't need any permits. They don't need to be regulated. We don't necessarily need to know who they are. Obviously, they have to abide by the performance standards. And if they're gonna be away when the rental is there, maybe they need to leave contact information. Maybe we can require that. I don't know if through zoning you can do that, or you'd need an ordinance. Um and then the commercial rentals where the person is never living there and it's property is bought for the commercial maybe we don't allow those, but you know, I think that's where Mark was going. The last time we talked about this is that we don't really allow that, but then you'd have to enforce it in some way. And since we don't have any rental strategies anyway, you know, we don't say who can rent or whether, we don't need to know whether your house is rented or you're living in it. You're, you know, we don't have that information of people. That may be harder to do than we might think. Anyway.
Yeah, I mean, like S one hundred is impacting uh housing and uh multi-unit requirements and those kinds of things. I, I, I can't help but think that I certainly would hope that the state is, is making some sort of progress headway on uh on the Airbnb issue too. So I don't know if uh was, was it Dan that you, you recommended having a, the state rep sort of chime in on a, on a meeting? Maybe we could reach out to them and see if they could give us a background on some of the legislative activity about these couple items. I think that's
Bills in the legislature about short term rentals?
No, okay, yeah.
It doesn't mean that they're not there.
I know the town, you know, many towns are thinking about it and trying to figure out what they wanna do about it. So um, yeah, well, we could ask Jana Brown to also talk to us about that, if there is any efforts being made um on short term rentals. Alright, so I think, anybody else wanna comment about short term rentals? More research will be done.
Do you think that the sketchout that you put together was useful in this framework?
Okay, yep. And the language for in and guest house is the new language that we put in our packet for the RC district so that it would fit into this system if we wanted it to, you know, if we wanted to adopt some kind of system like this. So that's, that language is already in front of the select board as a definition, be approved. Anyway, so let's have comments on that next time and um we'll get some other information. And see where we're going with that. Um so a couple of other things that we need to just spend a minute on is the question of Jolena Court. So you know, Revy had been working with Jolena Court to think about an increased density or possible affordable housing units there. We wanted to know how it was going with Jolena Court. You know, where we left it after they built their first building was that they were now gonna have to come back for the permit for their second building with the thirty-one units and the commercial on the ground floor as the zoning was set up for them through the whole process of setting up that zoning. So there was a meeting that Keith and Tyler, the zoning administrator, went to with the Jolena Court folks. Since we wanna think about, is this still what we want, the zoning? You know, our part in it would be, are there any changes in the zoning that would be useful here with Jolena Court, thinking about their more housing? So can you give us a little report on what happened at that meeting?
So a quick, a quick synopsis is, is that this has been going on for two years. It was going on when I was here two years ago. Uh and it really hasn't proceeded um at all. And obviously because of, of material costs and so on and so forth. Uh but they're coming in uh soon with uh the proposal for thirty-one units, commercial on the ground floor, um which is, you know, what, what the standards are in the district. Uh they'll be moving forward to that. They are definitely open to, to um building more residential units. But at this point, they are not uh in any ratio or form going to go and, and do uh affordable housing at this point. That, that seemed to be a non-starter with them. It's just uh 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 they're, they're focused on this phase two aspect of Jolena Court right now. Um and uh basically what it was, was a pre-submission meeting. Um and, and I did impart to them that, that the planning commission and the town is open to modifying some of the requirements of density, um but we need to have that discussion and we need to see what, what, you know, their bandwidth on that is. And, and we're not sure, but their focus right now is not so much on the distant future, it's on the near future. And it is a phase two project right now. So
Do they have a plan, a plan, an actual physical drawing of what they're building?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's pretty much finalized at this point. Um they have the sewer taken care of. Um they, they, the engineering is, is pretty much spot on. Um uh you know, there, there are some issues, technical issues with that and, and application issues with that. Um but uh a- again, to reiterate, they're focused on getting that other building in place um as soon as they can. And they're coming in, and they're coming in for approvals uh shortly through the DRB. So that's the long and the short of it.
So Lisa, yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. Hi Keith, question on that. Um have they done a lot of the work in the last few months on, on this? I mean, it seems to have developed really quickly at Jolena Court?
Yeah, I think it's been a work in progress for many, many months. To be honest with you, it goes and fits and starts with them. That's been my experience. And right, right now they're starting. So, and they're kidding or whatever it is. Uh they, they sure looked like they were ready to go. There were two engineers and, and the owner was there. Um and uh they, they, they certainly looked like they're ready to go. And they did a really good job because Ty- Tyler, if anything, is, is um the number one, he doesn't lack in confidence, that's for sure. And but he, he really focuses on, on what the regulations state and what the requirements are for an application, which makes my job a heck of a lot easier, to be honest with you. Um he's, he's uh, he's pretty tough in that regard. So he went point by point by point uh with the regulations with these folks. And we were there for a good hour, hour and a half. And uh they got the message. And what they came in with initially was probably ninety to ninety-five percent there. Um so they, they have been working on this uh pretty steadily recently. That's, that's my take on it. After it was laying fallow for a while.
Right, so exactly.
So I would expect it to be on a DRB agenda coming soon.
Sorry, the dog had to bark.
So our question, and you know, the question for the planning commission is, do we, are we interested in trying to allow them to have more density in building number two? Or should we just let them go ahead with their plan for building number two with a commercial on the bottom floor as is written in their district? And think about the longer term future where they had planned a building three and four, which was the, going to have to be then all commercial because they would have used up all their units. Uh you know, is that good with us? We just need to revisit it a little bit and think, is, is this fine? Is this what we want? Are we, are we requiring that to have commercial on the ground floor when they already have this empty commercial? And the, this is the one thing that I think about sometimes is looking at the ground floor of building number one, which has remained, except for Raymond James, completely underutilized for the, you know, since they built that building, whenever it was, two or three years ago. I think Joy had her hand up and then Gary. Go ahead, Joyce.
Well, so we need housing, right? And we're trying to find where to put it. It's a great location for that. And I think you guys should talk to Sid Miller. He emailed me today. He just lost a huge tenant and is somewhat panicking because he can't find any, you know, just kinda poking around the market. He's like, it's really bad out there. It's really bad. Um so, you know, here we are with the one building already empty. We've got another one that's about to be empty. And we're forcing commercial down people's throats when that's not, you know, that's not viable. And we need housing. So I don't even see where we have any issue with it. I mean, that's the, this is the, this is the reality.
So Joy, you think
I'll second that.
We should think about Jolena Court District zoning and change some things in it? Do you think this is a good time to do that? Should we be doing that? You know, rather than making them have this commercial space on the ground floor that was a holdover from previous, you know, from interim zoning when they went from wanting it to be all commercial.
And that was before the pandemic. It was a few years ago.
It was a few years ago. Yeah. So do you think we should do something?
Part of me that says, well, they knew it going in that this is gonna be the situation and they should have to stick with it, right? There is a part of me that says that. And then there's another part of me that says, we need housing. You know, here we are trying to figure out where to put it. Nobody wants it on Baker Street. Nobody wants it on this street. Nobody wants it on Tilden. Nobody wants it on Church Street. Don't put any more housing near me. But here we have this, this opportunity. And we're, you know, like I, I have a hard time with it because they, you know, not only do they not wanna stick by the rules, they also bent the rules and, you know, put more units in when they weren't supposed to. They don't follow the rules.
They never had a master plan that they followed, which they were supposed to.
There's, I definitely have issues with that, but we have to look at the greater good for the community.
Yeah. And there's a question whether people are gonna use that commercial space, you know, are people really going to use that? Or is it going to be empty? Is that commercial space gonna be empty like our other commercial spaces?
And if it is empty, they have to plan for that, which is gonna make everything more expensive, right? So
Can I just say something?
Lisa and then Allison.
Okay, thanks. You know, this, this has the makings of a deal, honestly. I mean, two people each have something that the other wants. It's, it's a pretty good opportunity for us to get something that we want and they get something that they want. Yeah, in re, not a quid pro quo, but it's a perfect opportunity to time it. So I think there needs to be a dialogue.
So you would be in favor of the planning commission taking this up now and uh cause now is the time if we're talking about building number two.
Right, that ship may have sailed as far as timing wise.
That ship may have sailed, but we could ask them. If we said, we're gonna give you units on the ground floor, do you wanna redo your building plan for units on the ground floor? I mean,
I have to believe they, they'd pause and listen, at least.
Yeah, the, the DRB could, could also issue conditions of approval also based on, on upcoming ordinances potentially. I, I, I don't know how, how legal that would be. That's something I'd run through Dave Ruh, but you know, at this point.
Depends whether we wanna take this opportunity or not.
Allison, well, I, I wanted to mention that uh this, the Jolena Court thing, it's gone on for five or six years, probably. Oh, well, it, okay, let's just start with that.
Okay, yep.
What has happened in between? The pandemic has completely changed the commercial world. It has completely changed the need for office space. Uh and uh in, I think that, that uh a lot more work is being done from home on computers and this kind of thing. The whole way that this business in society is being conducted is quite different. Look at all the empty commercial space in Burlington.
Yeah, which they're now allowing to go residential.
Yeah, and so I, I'm supporting uh some of what Joy said about uh yeah, let's get real and see what do we need and what do people need. Uh cause I think when we designated those provisions before uh about the first floor being commercial and whatnot, we were Uh, about the first floor being commercial and whatnot, we were.
You guys, as a business owner too, I mean, like, it's so difficult to find people to work these days, you know? And the problem is we don't have affordable housing. You can't, it's making the state just not, we're not, never gonna be able to afford to live here. My kid's fault. My child, I don't know how he's ever gonna live here. And if we don't start making these changes and really think about making, you know, have more housing and shifting with the times. I don't, we're, we're never gonna get out of this.
Yeah, I, I think that that's right, Joy. I think uh we're dealing with. Uh, a societal situation that's an entirely different set of circumstances than we were five years ago.
Dan, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I have a few thoughts. Um, one, on the affordable housing front, if they're not willing to deal. On uh, on that, do we have the ability to put into that district rent control measures? That would essentially limit how much they jack up the rent? You know, for for me, the the reason I started looking to buy a house and bought a house here was. My landlord in Burlington was raising the rent like twenty-something percent. And so it just became all of a sudden not, not feasible. It was way more than a mortgage. Um, and so that would be a huge help. As someone who's, you know, of that generation, that would be a huge help. To, you know, keep Vermont affordable as you get this job and you're like, okay, I could, I could pay my rent now. But then to have a landlord increase at twenty percent, just kind of like blows the roof off of that. So that's, that's the one thought. I don't know if we could put in any rent control measures in that particular district. The other is with increased housing, I'm for that, but. How do we start negotiating with sharper elbows with GMT? We don't have a seat at the table at GMT. And we can't get a, a stop in town. And it's kind of crazy that a bus does go from Waterbury to the Richmond exit, but can't, you know, maybe take Route two and stop. Just somewhere in town. Cause if we're going to have all this increased. All this increased housing, we're essentially requiring all those people, thirty-one plus people to also have a car because that's the only way you can live in Richmond. You know, you do see some folks walking down Route two to grab the bus, but other than that. You know, like, we, we need some sort of incentives. And so if we want to start. Really looking at this, I think we need to also think a little more, a little more options to make it one, attractable to live in Richmond. Because not everyone owns a car. That's, you know, another. How much is a used car these days? Twenty-five thousand dollars? Um, plus. You know, having their rent jack up. So if we're actually gonna do something about a problem, I think those are two things of many things we could probably be considering.
One thing I will say about the traffic situation is. We did, Revy and I had a study done about by regional planning, I think. About the parking and the traffic numbers of commercial versus. Housing in Jolena Court. Now, of course, if your commercial space is completely empty, there's not going to be any traffic from it. But if your commercial space is full and the, the numbers of parking spaces that we required of Jolena Court. Was based on the possible commercial uses, which actually turn out to require more cars and have more trip ends. Than residential. So the par- the parking and the traffic from that point of view would actually be less with residential.
Good point.
There is this question of Act two fifty that it's going to go through, have to go through and the second exit question. But that is all something that has to be looked at, but the actual numbers are not more if there's residences.
I, I'm not concerned personally about traffic. I'm concerned about cost because if you have to have a car, that automatically jacks up the cost. And if we're actually going to be meeting twenty, thirty goals or twenty, fifty goals or wherever the, the, the goalposts are now. You know, we can't have every person have a car. I mean, like I sit and I watch people drive past my house all day and it's an SUV with one person in the car. And so like if we're actually, if we're actually going to be doing anything about climate crisis and affordability, um, I think that's it. I'm not really worried about.
Yeah.
Traffic that much.
Yep. And the rental question, I don't know the rent control question. That seems way complicated. You can put it on your list.
It's not a zoning issue. I mean, that's, that's, it's not anything that zoning can take care of. You know, that's a policy issue.
Right.
It's the state issue. Bob just pointed out to me that um, the House has a bill up right now to limit how much. Uh landlords can raise their rents. Um, and I I'm against that entirely. Just, I don't think that that's the solution. I think that. Creating more units allow, and actually you guys, this is the solution to the short-term rentals too, you know, if we have enough housing stock. That's not even, doesn't even become a problem. Um, but all right, I'll let it go. We said, you're up.
Okay, um, let's see, Lisa, I think you had your hand up.
No.
No, okay, your hand is still up, but it's the old hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even see it.
Gary.
The old man.
Let's see, am I muted? No, I'm not.
No, you're good.
So on the first floor, uh, Greasy has been in part of the J- Jolena Court building for, for, for quite a few months now. On the first floor. So I don't know how much space they took up or if there is the middle space is still open, but. Yeah, the town does need some commercial space. I agree with Joy with almost everything she said that it's fine to go. Uh, more residential there and in response to Dan's comment of. Negotiating with sharper elbows, why don't you start by offering? To let the commercial go to uh affordable housing and see if you get a response rather than just. Starting it with market rate housing offer.
My, sorry, my, my sharper elbows was for GMT, just cause.
Uh, uh, sharper elbows are okay in other ways.
Yeah. Well, we could certainly offer that, although the affordable housing discussion with Jolena Court has never. Either now or previously with Revy gone anywhere, you know, it's. Too few units. Nobody wants to manage that few units. They don't want it, you know, the town. If the town would have to manage it because nobody else would manage it if you have only a few affordable units in somebody else's building. It's just, you know.
Okay.
That seems like a, an impossible situation, but building actually more units at least is somewhat helpful. And the units they build are small, so they're.
Right.
Somewhat inexpensive.
Yeah, two bedrooms, one bedroom.
Yeah, well, one bedroom or studios that are three hundred square feet. So Lisa, is that a new hand or an old?
Uh, it's both hands, actually three hands.
Okay.
Um, Virginia, a question, I wonder, does the, do, do any of the affordable housing authorities, you know, Champlain Housing Trust or the others? Uh, help out with management? Do they do anything after the sale? Um, are they available for long-term? Uh, advise or something? For, for affordable housing.
Affordable housing like Champlain Trust and Cathedral Square want to build their own buildings and own them and manage them and. Deal with the incredibly complicated financing of these situations, you know, they are subsidized. They have like seven sets of financial instruments going at any one time to build one single building. I mean, it's very, very complex, the financing. This is why they want to own the buildings. They want to own them. They want to run them. They want to deal with them. Is how, and they want it to be of a certain volume, like twenty or thirty units is the only thing that is financially viable for them apparently. So.
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't just manage someone else's property, even if it were on the affordable market?
No, they don't want to do that.
You could have the same conversation that you, that folks were trying to have with us, which was, you know, why not have Cathedral Square? They've got two other buildings planned. They could essentially have a conversation with them about one of those and then in return they get more units in the building or proposing right now.
Yeah, and I think Revy did have that conversation with them and they weren't interested in. Anybody else owning a land or.
I under- I understand that.
But maybe, you know.
Yeah, the other thing you guys have to keep in mind when you talk about affordable housing and stuffing those units in, I bring this up a lot because. I, I think this way, which is when you do the numbers for the bank, it needs to work. There is a number that they need you to make on top of what your mortgage and your insurance and your taxes. Plus a month of empty, right? They make you plan on an entire month of every one of your units being empty. When you do those numbers, it's hard to get the financing, you know, it's difficult. So. Adding that in and makes projects like this not happen, like it's just, I, that's my. What I can see why they immediately are like, no, not gonna happen. So.
Okay, we have time for just a couple more comments. Mark.
Thank you. Yeah, um. So, yeah, I, I tell you, they're, they're an interesting operation. And uh, if they're coming to us now, ready to go forward with building two. With uh commercial space the way it is, they've worked the numbers. And uh, you know, yes, that's part of the added cost, but uh, they're not exactly an altruistic operation. They're going to make as much as they possibly can on. Uh, on each apartment, regardless of whether there's thirty-four units and no commercial. Or fifty units of all residential there. You know, this, this is not like their price is going to go down on their apartment. If they get fifty units instead of the, the thirty-four they're coming forward with now. So they have a game plan. I do think that, yes, I know commercial is, is, is really off and there's been a number of factors that have, that have, have pummeled. Commercial space there. Um. And I can see, hey, maybe not requiring commercial, but I get a little anxious about uh. Just letting them at this point, even in that building, um. Bounce up. Residential units because they're just, you know, they're keeping lots of space left because they know that eventually at some point they're going to be able to put even more in. I worry about now because I am very curious about what an extra thirty-four units on that uh four-way intersection. By the railroad tracks is going to have an impact and without any of the other contingencies. Like a secondary exit and that kind of thing and tra- one-way traffic flow. Um, for us to, to start saying, okay, yeah, let's, let's give you more residential, let's give you less commercial. Uh, and, and don't worry about anything. We'll just, you know, pay for all the traffic. Headaches are going to come from that and the development, because I'm pretty sure right now, as it is, they're not making any concessions towards uh. Traffic lights or street improvements, that kind of thing to facilitate uh. Uh, that four-way intersection that's going to bump up pretty considerably when you put an extra. Thirty-four units, fifty people, fifty cars a day coming in and out of that at uh prime time. I'm, I'm hesitant to make any changes. If they think they can make it work as it is. Then I guess we'll just have to eat it and deal with it and hope that they don't uh build five feet from the back end of the cemetery.
Well, I'll, you know, once again, like I mentioned to Dan, is there was the study that was done between residential and commercial use. And actually the traffic, there was going to be. No increase in traffic if you changed all of that commercial space. That's assuming that it was built. If it's empty, obviously there won't be any traffic from it. So that's one way to reduce the traffic, but. If it's filled, commercial space with people coming and going, there will be traffic. So it's not like.
Difference is that traffic would be coming into Richmond in the morning. As opposed to coming out and getting in line and going to the light in the morning, right?
Right.
That is the difference.
What the business is, yeah, I guess workers would be coming in to that business.
And if, and if one of those units turns out to be a public uh, uh laundromat. Win.
That would be good, right?
Extremely.
Okay, so do we want to work more on this now or not? I mean, we'll kind of, we kind of have to decide. That's something that, do we want to just let the cards?
What was their request exactly? What was the, are they asking us to look at this again? They're just telling us that this is going.
They're not asking us to look at it again.
No, their, their focus is on, on getting phase two completed. At market price. Um, and they're, they're planning on putting in the, in the, the commercial space down on the first floor. Um, and, but they are open to a discussion on uh more market price apartments. Uh, for phases three and four, of which they, you know, a- as the, the regulations are written, they're, they're maxed out on that right now.
So then I, I say we wait until the conversation comes up for three and four. I mean, I think we need more housing, but if they're fine with what they have, I agree with Mark, let it go. Why, you know, they're not asking us to do it.
Oh, they're not. Oh. All right, so is that? Fine with everyone? Okay, I'm not hearing any comments that would make me think we need to start working on this now if we want to get more housing out of it. That's fine. We'll think about it for phase three and four.
Yeah, and I would assume that when, when they come back in for phase three and four, which are smaller units, I mean, they're, they're, they're running out of property there. Uh, so uh, you know, the, the whole parking issue that's there is limiting. Um, you know, I'm sure that they're going to want to, want to have that discussion then, to be honest with you, and then that's when we should broach it.
Right, that sounds good. So, any other business? Do you have anything that you want to bring up? Anybody else have anything? Gary?
I was just gonna mention, uh, Keith mentioned he didn't know where Acre came from and I looked it up during the meeting and it was codified over a thousand years ago in England. It's based on what one person with two oxen and a wooden plow can plow in one day.
Yeah.
Cool.
And forty-three, five, sixty.
Yeah, pretty exact.
Okay. Well, this might be why we're going to the square footage.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah.
Very good, Gary. That's pretty interesting.
It'd been better if you went to square meters.
Oh my.
All right, so that's good. I think we're good to go. Um. Try to think about these questions that we have, you know, like the building standards and all that kind of stuff for next time. And we'll see how S one hundred shapes out and um do a little more work on the short-term rentals.
I, I would add one more thing, I guess. Um, and, and that would be if you guys have any questions, um, you know, obviously shoot me an email. Uh, if you need me to research something and, and uh, you know, uh, just shoot me an email. Uh, I can do that and I'm, I'm open to do that. That's my job, so.
Yeah, thanks, Gary. I mean, thanks, Keith.
And the uh, re-applications for the four of us whose term ends this year are due on the uh, twelfth of April, I believe. And after that, we'll have to see what our membership looks like. And decide if we need to go back to a seven-member board so that we can achieve our forum readily. Anyway. So, great. So thank you all. We'll see you next time in a couple of weeks and um.
Hopefully have the technology figured, figured out by then.
Right? Working on technical challenges.
Thanks, everyone.
Do we need a motion?
Do we have a motion?
You, uh, sure, you can make a motion, Dan. Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Did you make a motion? Lisa seconded it. Dan made the motion to adjourn. Lisa seconded it. Got that?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And anybody not in favor of that?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, that sounds good. We're taking that as being a unanimous vote. Yep.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.